Six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order, noting everyone is here except Member Oslatch, who's not feeling well. We wish him the best. Confirmation of the agenda?
That the committee adopts the agenda for the meeting of October 2nd, 2024.
Can we have a mover and a seconder, please? Member Chapman, Member Rahi. Further discussion? All those in favor? The motion is carried. Declaration of pecuniary interest. Member Van Ray?
In accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I, William Van Ray, have pecuniary interest with response with respect to item 6.1, Preliminary Operating Budget 2025, specifically the sections relating to crossing guard service and the Elmer Fire Department. I therefore declare a disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature therefore of as follows: I am the owner of Inclusive Communities and Life Skills, the service provider related for crossing guard services. I am further a volunteer firefighter for the Elmer Fire Department. I do therefore agree not to take part in the discussion of or vote on any question in respect to the matter and shall not attempt in any way, whether before, after, or during the meeting, to influence the voting on any such question.
Thank you. Next to our business, 5.1 minutes of the previous Finance Committee meeting.
That the committee adopts the minutes, noting no errors or omissions.
A mover and a seconder, please. Member De Rosier, Member Rahi. Discussion? All those in favor? The motion is carried. Action items. The way we're going to proceed this evening is Heather's going to make a presentation overview of the operating budget. At the conclusion of that, we'll address or during the process, we'll address any questions that that may arise. Following that, we'll go around the table and verify that everyone's concerns are are addressed. That sound fair? Okay. Heather?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you into members of the committee, the preliminary operating budget that you have in front of you this evening shows an estimated levy increase of 7.8% for 2025. Staff are hoping that this represents worst-case scenario with the assumptions that we have included for each department, but we're still waiting for things like UMF funding to come through to be announced and WSIB rates and such. Just wanted to start off by saying that police service and EECC budgets have been intentionally excluded from this until the boards have their presentations in front of them. In summary, some of the pressure, some of the pressures for this budget are vendor cost increases due to subcontract labor and materials for contracted services, increases in insurance costs due to claims for 2023 and 2024, which are assumed to be an overall 6% and 9% for budgetary purposes, and challenges in assessment that were thought to be previously firm. So due to reversal in assessment from 2023, we started off again in a negative assessment. Since we have or we since have recovered to cover that, but the additional homes gaining occupancy at this point, the the growth is marginal. So the assumptions in this budget still need to be finalized as well as the impact assessment, but I'm using the current forecast from MPAC showing that right now it could pay for about 1.8% of the levy impact, which is great news. So the timing of the occupancy for those homes that are coming online is what we're trying to get in for MPAC to key off or to cut off for the keying dates. So we still have another month of that. So that's why I'm using the forecast at this point. Another thing to note, repayment of reserves used for legal investigations increases to CPP for calculations to the two-tiered ceiling that were introduced in 2024 have added other other pressures out of our control. Adding full-time headcount to support future growth and adding the part-time community program coordinator has contributed to the higher starting point for 2025. I just want to remind the committee of that. As mentioned in the report, we're not addressing the infrastructure gap in asset management yet as of this budget year. With the requirements for asset management, we know we're behind, but we have been successful in receiving some grants, which has allowed us to hold on this point for a few years to help offset the burden in water and sewer services. We'll address the additional contributions to reserve in 2026 budget. I'm expecting a substantial amount of occupancy happening in those new subdivisions. So once we receive occupancy from those, the the growth can pay for that. We're still waiting for increased insurance costs confirmation and for the renewal, but right now the assumptions in the budget are as follows: primary liability, 6% increase estimated, umbrella, 10 to 15% overall, property, 6% inflationary increase, and 8% increase estimated for property. 2% to 3% increase assumed in this budget. Council accident should remain flat and cyber will hopefully remain flat for 20 as with 2024 rate. So I'm going to let Michelle get to the general government overview page, and I'll start with there and just give you the high-level changes in that. So it's further down, looks like page 32. I'm kind of skipping over all this, but you guys, I'm sure, have read it all. So general government, the changes in expense include restructuring labor and re-bucketting of headcount, which was approved prior to or with the departure of the prior clerk. So that changed in early 2024. So you'll see that change compared to 2024 budget, plus the contract contractual salary increase of 1.75 for 2024 or for 2025. So increased insurance costs, as I mentioned, is also show will also show up in general government. Annual maintenance contracts assumptions of seven grand increase per year. If you scroll down one, Michelle, you'll be able to see the summary overall. So the increased council training and expenses of $9,000 per year also show up in general government. And just wanted to note, so subsequent to the staff report, we heard that AMO is also going to be in Ottawa this year. So the $9,000 that we put in here wouldn't allow for everybody to go because the cost of that would be about 3,000. So that's just something to consider. And then, of course, repayment of the legal reserve for the integrity commissioner investigation of 15,000 will show up in here. And also, sorry, that's it for the expenses. So on the revenue side, we have increased marriage ceremonies. Chelsea's been busy marrying people. So our our outside areas aren't offering that service. So we're we're gaining a lot of revenue on that. So that has increased. We've had a small increase in commissioner signatures and burial permits. I'm going to move on to planning and development, which should be the next one down. So the changes on the expense side include, and if you go to the the overview page, I think it's one more down. So again, restructuring of labor, re-bucketting of the headcount approved with the departure of the clerk, which happened in early 2024, plus a 1.75 salary increase for staff. The additional headcount also shows up in here, not entirely because of the re-bucketting with general government, but the technical planning coordinator to help with the volume of applications was added in this budget. Also, additional insurance for the new industrial park is around 5,000. Increased legal fees have also been added in here to estimate for the volume of applications at around 10,000. And then, of course, the offsetting revenue gains are in planning of committee, planning and committee of adjustment fees, which have increased by $6,700. So I'm going to skip over operations right now because of the pecuniary interest declared, and we're going to go down to parks and rec. So it's pretty far down there. All right. So restructuring labor, utilizing outside services for some areas of grass cutting occurred in this budget, plus the salary increase of 1.75% for 2025. Then the the newest item was the additional headcount that we added for the community programming assistant. Increase in insurance of assumptions already mentioned. Increase in programming expenses, which will show up in the total admin area for $10,000 to help offset some of the anticipated programming costs of this new position. We don't want to hire somebody and not have any money for them to implement new programs. So we estimated that at about $10,000. And then we also have an increase in water and chemical costs, which roll up into here, which is in the pool and the splash pad. Then on the revenue side, the removal of the $18,000 from Malheid contribution toward the YMCA agreement shows up in lost revenue. So if we can continue moving on to agencies and other boards, so we're going to jump over EECC. So for agencies and other boards, this specific line item is for Catfish Creek, and I had put a 7% in here, but I'm hearing rumors it may be 10. So I'm going to add that in the next reiteration on November 6th, which which will show an additional $3,000 in this budget approximately. And then if we go to grants and donations, we we obviously just have that, we had that closed. So we'll provide another staff report on that. I assumed that nothing's changed. I didn't reduce this yet to the 45,000 that was in the resolution before, but I will do that for the next meeting when we discuss the grants and donations. So I'm going to go back to operations and then I'll stop when we get to transportation. I'm going to jump over fire also because it's in protection services. So I'll start, I'll end off with those. So the first one in operations is environmental services. And then if you go, yep. So staff have been notified of the tipping fees increases are about around 2.7%. So you also see garbage contract increase of 3%. But what you don't see is the credit from the recycling costs of the program ending. So overall, you have a 1.74% with the increased fees and the decrease in cost for recycling. But I will remind council that they had previously approved the town to still pay for some businesses to have their recycling picked up, which is around 15,000. So that stays in, rolled up in this number. I'm going to move into water, I believe, is next. So the changes here are the billed water revenues were adjusted to offset purchases from the primary water supply. The debt also require that we required to pay in principal and interest. We had forecasted last budget year at 7.7 million. I don't want to jinx anything, but I've only debentured 6.7 of that, 7.7 debt. So we don't have at this point, I'm not forecasting that we're going to need that extra million dollars in debt. So which is why you're dropping on the interest in in principle in the long-term debt line. So all of these are paid by the the user fees. So it doesn't affect the levy, which is why you see the levy at zero. But I just wanted to explain those in detail. The next one, similar to water, is wastewater. So happily, we didn't have to forecast long-term debt because, as you guys are aware, we received the Hughes notification that we got for the grant funding. So that was great news. What did increase, though, here is hydro costs and contracted services for the lagoons and sewer. So that does also get paid by the user rates, which was all in the in the plan in 2021. So there's no changes that affect the tax levy in this department. Labor, you can note here, we do have some cross-training happening with our staff. So we're, we have more staff that are learning how to do this water wastewater sanitary tickets. So there, you're going to see some labor going into here. So that's the true-up of the actual labor in this budget. So then I'm going to go to transportation, and we can talk about the majority of it. So the changes in transportation are changes which include restructuring to labor and re-bucketting of the headcount with the departure of the clerk, plus a contract salary increase of 1.75%. Increase in insurance assumptions also hit this department. Approximately 25 or 21,000 of the admin material and supplies line is for hydro. So those new subdivisions coming online, we have to forecast the hydro for them before we get occupancy. There's a little bit of an increase there. We also have increase in repair and maintenance for street signs, which has been adjusted to the actual prorated costs for the last couple of years. And road patrol has slightly increased due to the new roads that require patrolling. So I will stop there, give William a chance to leave, and then I'll come back. So if we go back to protection service, oh, I guess we can talk about transportation still. So what we had, what we have in transportation is the crosswalk. So we removed internal labor that was restructured in 2023. We didn't take that amount out of budget in the internal labor, but didn't also budget it in subcontract services because we weren't sure if the pilot program would work. It's very successful from the from the operation standpoint, and we've actually been able to reduce that cost by about $5,000. So you'll see the pickup in in the labor budget. That's why you see the transportation labor not so high. So that subcontracted service is now done by Inclusive Communities. That's the pecuniary interest. So we're done with transportation. But I'm going to flip over now to fire. So it's in protection services. So in protection services, it includes building, fire, 911 dispatch, county of Algon P O A, bylaw enforcement, and animal control. So excluding the fire department, basically, everything's relatively minor. There's no change in bylaw, really. There's a small incremental increase. There's the building, the building department just has the labor costs in it. We've, we've left the building permits static for 2025. And at the end of the day, the building department pays for itself. So if we go to fire now, the only changes here are in labor, essentially. There's, there's some small admin and repairs and maintenance changes. We also had to true up the gas costs at the fire hall, which the chief has found a couple grand here and there to reduce in the contracted services and the repairs and maintenance in order to pay for that increase. So as I mentioned, we're not going to go through police service and EECC boards. I guess we can ask William to come back in and I'll finish the rest of the presentation.
If there's any questions on the?
Oh, good point. Questions on on fire or crosswalk?
Okay, all right.
That council acknowledged the proposed 2025 preliminary operating budget for crossing guard services and the fire department as presented, and that council directs staff to present the final version of the 2025 operating budget for crossing guard services and the fire department for review and adoption at a future meeting.
Can we have a mover and a seconder for the motion, please? Member Cookett, Member Chapman, further discussion? All those in favor? The motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Heather, for that presentation.
Yeah, I'm pretty much open the floor to to council questions. So.
Do members of the committee have any questions for Heather? Specific questions? Member De Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any considerations for council to further review to reduce the tax levy rate anymore?
That's a greater encompassing picture. I wonder if this is the appropriate time to do that. Heather, do you want to do that at this particular point?
I, I mean, we can speak generally. We can talk about, you know, all the reductions if you if you guys want. But at this point, I'd like to go through the detail of the expenses to see, is there anything else we're missing? Is there anything else that, you know, you want to look at in detail? Or, I mean, the opportunities are, you know, service level changes. I, I mean, I could go on, but it's at this point, I think it's it's really the expenses.
I'll just follow up if I can first. So is there, you're stating that there is actually a report coming to council that I'm just unaware of right now that's going to outline options for council?
Maybe I can answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, I think we're, we're considering, we have some potential ideas for November 6th that we will present. I don't think I'm going to present a red, yellow, green. I don't think we have as many options as we did in kind of the 2023 budget. So it is, it is certainly tight. I do know staff on our end, we've already kind of gotten some here, and I know Heather didn't address that, but I think we were at 11 or 12 when we started. So there has been some progress. But yeah, we will have a couple options, I think, for council. When we get to this part of the budget, it, they're never, they're never fun options, I'd say, but but they will be before you.
Member Cookett, I think you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Andy answered the basic part of that. I'm just looking at 7.8% as a, as a levy, which is high. Of course, compared to other communities around us, it's not that high. But as Andy was alluding to, in other years, we've had finance come back with a number of options. Do you have, do you have like an end figure in mind? Like you have, give us options that would reduce it to six and give us options that would reduce it to five, that kind of thing? Because that's the kind of thing I think council would want to look at.
Yeah, we, like Andy said, we are bringing a council report forward for November 6th. Some tough options for council to consider, but at this point, I'm not recommending those options at all. But it's, they will be up for council consideration on November 6th.
Would it be fair to say that the options that you're considering would reduce services to some degree in various departments?
Through you. I think we, we kind of already went through that exercise a bit with this term of council. So I don't think, staff aren't really interested in repeating a discussion we've had already with this term. So I think we're trying to advance it and present different options. Some of them, though, like the, the, to use an example, the recycling that we currently provide for businesses, with that change in the recycling legislation and the download, a lot of the businesses aren't, aren't covered, and we cover $15,000 of that. Now, is that something that council wants to consider? That's one that we haven't really thought about a lot at council, but it it may not be an option that you you want to look at. But we're, we're looking at things like that to bring forward that haven't been considered before primarily. But I think we don't, I don't want to get before you and suggest turning off the splash pads a month early again.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Member Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Chair. How many thousands of dollars do we have to drop it to drop 1%?
So through you, Mr. Chair, a levy point is, or a levy point is 72,000, but a tax point would be a little bit different. So for every 72,000, you'll drop a point.
Are there any other general questions at this time? All right, going around the table just to make sure. Member Rahi, any specific question?
No.
Member Van Ray?
Not really.
Member Chapman? Member De Rosier?
No.
Member Cookett?
If I may, Mr. Chair, it really doesn't have anything to do with the operational budget, although it it does in a, in a way. I've, I've received a lot of questions since the Old Town Hall Committee met in terms of the maintenance. And I know the maintenance numbers for the Old Town Hall are part of the capital budget. And if I looked at, at the capital budget, if we want to change that, it, it would affect the operational budget if we wanted to change some of the maintenance issues. I guess my, my comment and question are that when I look at the capital budget, I see that there's like 1.7 million slated for 2027, which is a lot of money, and which begs the question is of how much maintenance is really needed on the Old Town Hall right now. And I guess I would want to allay some of the fears of people out there that we're not letting the Old Town Hall fall down over three years. And so I'd like staff to comment on, you know, why push it to 2027? And, and are we, are we treating the Old Town Hall with, with the proper maintenance at the present time, just to allay the fears of people out there?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. So I think what I can convey to the community is certainly we had a representative from Ontario Heritage Trust come through that facility last year and do an inspection. And their assessment of that facility was that it was in better condition out of any heritage building that they've seen in in a while, quite some time. So I do think that there it is in pretty, pretty good condition. The reason that we went out and got the facility condition assessment was we like to look and approach these things with with open eyes. We want to know what the full cost will be, and we want to start planning towards them. And all of these, all of these submissions say, do the work next year, starting next year. We, we have to work within what we can afford. We, we need to be able to complete Elk Street, and we can't put Elk Street back till 2027 and move this project forward. So those are the kind of difficulties, but certainly the building is not going to fall down. That building is going to be maintained and is going to be in repair. It's just the major capital works to get it up to, to where we want it to be for future generations won't be done till 2027.
So, so just to, you know, make it absolutely clear, we have a maintenance budget for the Old Town Hall, and that maintenance budget is going on every year. So it's not like we're going to neglect that building. So thank you very much.
Further to that point, the heritage designation imposes certain criteria for repair. Do you want to touch on the window issue, Andy? Just so everybody's on the same page?
Oh, with the, the heritage? I, I don't think, we haven't considered beyond the facility condition assessment report on the heritage features, which, I mean, the one component with the heritage features are they're significantly more costly to repair. And that is something that we, we do have to look at and assess. But I think that would be closer to when we get to 2027 and look at implementing the, the works and start actually putting in the capital. Certainly, before we got that report, we did not know the scope or size of it. So it's good having our eyes open and understanding. And we've done the same thing with the EECC, where we understand the cost there now, and it was a bit of an eye-opener there as well. But very important for municipalities to go out at least once every decade and get these facility condition assessments. And that's kind of what we did. This is our, our, really, our look at, our, our high-level look at what we need to do over the next 10 years to keep these facilities viable.
Thank you. Any further comments by members of the committee? Any further comments by members of the committee? Okay. Owen, do we have a resolution?
Yes, the resolution reads that report Finance 19-24 respecting the preliminary operating 2025 budget be received as information, and that council acknowledge the proposed preliminary 2025 operating budget as presented, and that council direct staff to present the final version of the 2025 operating budget for review and adoption at a future meeting.
Thank you. A mover and a seconder? Member Cookett?
I'm not moving. I just have a question for clarification, if you may.
Absolutely.
Just related to my declaration of pecuniary interest, I stepped out for the discussion. Am I able to vote on this, accepting it?
So, yes, uh, council already conducted a vote on the, uh, crossing guard services as well as the fire department.
Perfect. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. We have a mover, a seconder? Member Van Rae? Uh, further discussion?
Oh, you said a seconder?
All those in favor? Uh, the motion is carried. Correspondents' an update? Seeing none? Any other staff reports? Okay. Uh, adjournment, oh, new business and inquiries by members? All right. A German resolution?
The council adjourned, or the committee adjourned at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Mover, uh, member DeRosa, member Rahi, all those in favor? Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular council meeting of Wednesday, October the 2nd, 2024. Well, um, absence. Begin with a moment of reflection and respect.
Thank you. Confirmation of the agenda?
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of October 2nd, 2024 as amended by adding the following items. Jessica Austin, presentation regarding the Coalition for Substance Abuse Prevention and the Planet Youth Model, and, uh, staff report Clerk 30-24, uh, 2026 Municipal Election Involvement Promotion Initiatives.
Moving seconder, Councilor Rozier and Councilor Rahi. Seeing no comments, all those in favor, is carried. Thank you. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest? We will, uh, move over the delegation since we're starting early and move into the consent agenda. So we have a communications and staff report 6.1.
Uh, that count, that the October 2nd, 2024 consent agenda be received for information, and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on September 2024.
Moving seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber, Councilor Van Rae's. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, is carried. Thank you. Uh, we have, uh, action items, Director of Financial Services, uh, registered property due for sale, resolution.
Uh, that report Finance 20-24 entitled Registered Properties Due For Sale be received as for information.
Moving seconder, Councilor Rahi and Councilor Chapman. Heather?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is, uh, these reports are very difficult to communicate, but, uh, we have one property that we have to put up for tax sale, uh, due to the arrears on the taxes. So this had been brought forward to, um, tax sale prior. The prior administration, uh, was trying to complete a deal with a adjacent property owner, which is why they didn't invest it. And that fell through. Uh, so now we're bringing this back through tax sale. As the property owners appear to be, um, from a defunct company. So the, um, there's several owners on, on title. They were unsuccessful in, uh, responding back to us. So we have no choice but to, um, put this property up for tax sale. So I, um, I bring this forward to council normally so that we can give the homeowners a chance to come in and pay their taxes. Is it, a lot of the time, they're unaware that they can't, uh, that they, their tax is going, or their house is going up for tax sale. This is a vacant piece of property. So, um, I'm just following the prior process that we've, uh, implemented as of 2021. Um, so the tax sale will, will be advertised in the Elmer Express for the next four weeks. Then we will have the tax sale on November 14th. So I'm just letting council, uh, know about that. That's it.
Okay. For council? Councilor DeRosa?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It doesn't say in the report, I believe, an address. Are we, are you allowed to tell us the address or just the rule number?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, there's no municipal identified ad- address on this parcel. It's just a vacant piece of property that's adjacent to 85 Forest Street. So, um, it's on the corner of Elm and the railroad track. And, uh, there was no municipal address assigned to that property.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Good question.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Is carried. Thank you. Amendment 7.2, Director of Financial Services, Reserve Funding Movements Resolution?
Uh, that report Finance 21-24 entitled Reserve Funding Adjustments For The EEEC Capital Be Received For Information, and that council direct the Director of Finance to move funds from the General Fund to the Town EEEC Capital Reserve to fund the remaining projects for, required for 2024.
Moving seconder, Councilor Chapman and Councilor Van Rae's. Heather?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so as council is aware, we have an EEEC reserve. Um, I didn't want to move funds and then move funds again or have to move funds back out. Uh, so I was waiting for the tender results to come through, for the most part, for the majority of the capital funds, uh, for 2024. Those have come through, except for the parking lot is the only tender that hasn't been issued yet. So I feel comfortable with 150,000 coming out of our general surplus reserve into the EEEC capital reserve, purely just to hold the funds so that we can show, uh, you know, that we have the money in that account at year end. Um, we basically will have to also fund next year's capital and so on and so forth. Uh, so I wanted to let council know that, um, at least 2024 will be funded out of this reserve. The remainder for, um, 2025 and onward, we will need to talk about, um, movements from asset management reserve. Uh, so with that, I'll try to answer any questions council may have.
Council? Seeing no questions, all those in favor? Resolution is carried. 7.3, Management of Parks and Recreation, uh, dealing with, uh, grant opportunity. We have a resolution?
Um, that report Recreation 30-24 entitled Program Recommendation, CSRIF Grant Opportunity Be Received As Information, and that council approve the submission of a joint grant application under the CSRIF Stream 1 for the repair and rehabilitation of the EEEC roof, HVAC system and cooling tower, cooling condenser tower, and that council authorize staff to work with the township of Malahide to complete the application by the, by October 29th, 2024 deadline.
Moving seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber and Councilor Chapman. Rob, I guess.
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, this report recommends that the town, uh, work with the township of, uh, Malahide to submit a joint application for, uh, projects at the East Elgin Community Complex. Um, the, uh, the, uh, the project identifies some critical need at the complex that we feel would be a strategic, uh, offering to the province for, uh, grant funding. You'll notice in this report, this is sort of the only, uh, staff recommendation. We didn't provide a lot of options, uh, to council. Uh, we did receive a lot of interest from our partners and our, our user groups about, uh, infrastructure that are near and dear to them. Uh, but the strength of the EEC application, uh, when reviewed it, would probably have me doing a report, uh, identifying the deficiencies in those other applications. And that's something that we didn't want it to do. We want to be in a position to support those other initiatives, um, when they, when they come available or when that opportunity presents itself. Um, the, 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 the project for the complex, the, the roof, the HVAC, those are actually identified in the eligible projects in the grant stream application. So we have, uh, projects that sort of dovetail very nicely with the grant application. And we've also done a considerable amount of work doing, uh, assessments at the EEEC. We've got estimated budgets from the roof supplier. We've got a lot of documentation that will really support, uh, the application for the EEEC. So that's really the only one we're recommending, uh, before council tonight. Um, you'll notice that we have been working with the top, uh, staff at the township of Malahide. Uh, they will be recommending, there's a report on the township agenda this week with a very similar recommendation that they feel strongly as well. We should probably work on this comp, on the, on the complex as our sort of only, uh, project. Uh, one thing I would point out with the funding, you can see it's, it's a bit thin. I've kind of provided sort of where we think we should go. We think that council should offer, uh, the maximum, um, availability of grant funding. So what we're planning on doing as we get a little further into the weeds, uh, we're going to pick those components from the complex that we feel would give our application the best strength. So not everything will be in for, like, but we're, we're going to try and maximize that grant with council's blessing, uh, maximize that grant with those components that give us the best shot at funding.
Thank you. Counsel? Counselor Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To Rob, if we did some of the work, is it prorated back? Like if we've already done the work, could we still get? Like, will the grant cover it if we did happen to put up everything that, like, when does it close, I guess, or how does that work?
Uh, there's typically in a deadline in the grant application that any funds expensed before that deadline are not eligible. And also be some of the things that, as we work through, I want to find the details. For example, we have, uh, awarded some tenders, but we have no expenses for those. So we'll, and we're going to reach out to ministry staff working with the township to find out what's in, what's out, and where, we, because we want to get as, as much as we can. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Uh, thank you, worship. To Rob, it says the, uh, the funding caps at a million dollars. Is there any indication of how much the, the big pot is that the whole province is sharing from?
Uh, I, I think I can, I think the amount was, it was either 200 or 250 million that was announced at the AMO conference.
So there's something to work with. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Resolution is carried. Thank you. Yeah, the addition of 7.4, dealing with, uh, mentorship program?
Uh, yes, the resolution is that report Clerk 30-24 regarding 2026 Municipal Election Involvement Promotion Initiatives be received for information.
Moving seconder, Councilor DeRosa and Councilor Rahi.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we do appreciate council's flexibility in accommodating this report on short notice. Um, as council is likely aware, the clerk's office does information to the public about our elections and about the processes in order to, uh, run for council. Uh, historically, our election promotion efforts have focused on providing clear information about the candidacy, candidacy process and encouraging residents to participate in the democratic process. Um, in preparation for the 2026 election, we have been undertaking and looking at some new and innovative ways to engage underrepresented groups, uh, with the goal of fostering more diverse engagement and, uh, representation in local government. Council asked staff to provide consideration of including, uh, FCM's protege program. Council asked staff to provide consideration of including FCM's protege program in the election engagement efforts, which aims to provide mentorship for women interested in entering municipal politics. So we have looked through that. There is analysis within the report that we circulated to you. We do have recommendations to either refer the, the sorry, refer the program to Elgin County for consideration at that level, or specifically write a letter of advocacy towards AMO who is currently looking at this issue and recently released a report on their desire to facilitate a mentorship program. With that in mind, if council is interested in our staff here directly facilitating it, we did find a good example of a recent program facilitated by the town of Coleberg in 2021. There was some costs associated with that program, cost for advertising and facilitating meetings and as well as some, what I would guess, significant staff time in terms of organization. And with that in mind, so I can take any questions.
Okay, before I ask for a question, just to remind people, the, this report grew out of a request from council to take a look at the, the FCM proposal and other kinds of proposals that are out there for mentoring and to, I guess, have a staff kind of a resolution on, on which of these things we should be doing. Now, this resolution just calls for, I guess, accepting it, but I, I think it also means that we should give some direction as to what we would do in the future. Okay. Whether we do this kind of thing or not do this kind of thing. All right. Questions? Counselor Disrosi, you first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report was quite complex, but there was, there was various information here that I had concerns with. But two things that specifically set out to me was specifically, quote, "Elmer needs to consider that it is likely a town mentorship program could impact the next municipal election. Within the context of Elmer, a mentorship program could more easily provide the necessary resources to run immediately." And where this, these quotes are positioned within this report, it is received as a negative considerations, which concerns me. So what I would like from staff is an explanation as to when you say that it would impact our next municipal election, do you mean in a negative manner or do you mean in a positive manner? And secondly, you know, equip candidates to run immediately, is that not something as a municipality that we strive to, to, to do is to make sure that our candidates are equipped to run immediately opposed, like, I don't know what the alternative to that is. So if you could explain those two, that'd be great.
Sure. So specifically, this protege program was based out of the city of Toronto, where they did at the time have 45 municipal councillors and they would have had a senior staff of probably over 100 staff. And they were able to prepare candidates in the program facilitated through a university with one of these members of council and one of the members of staff. Specifically in the report where the reference you made versus the city of Toronto, the, the program would not have, it would have been more difficult to immediately prepare someone to run for council. If the town of Elmer specifically and our staff and our members of council, the protege program, it calls for one-on-one mentoring and selection of individuals from the community. So that would essentially be council and staff taking a very direct influence on outcomes in the next election, specifically on the scale of Elmer. So while I think the city of Toronto is more able to facilitate this program, I think there are some more ethical concerns about a municipality of our size specifically doing it, which is why the recommendations are if we want to facilitate this locally, that there be no selection process. And any eligible candidate, so any, if the program is available to women between the age of 18 and 30, which I believe was the, in the original guideline document, there be no denying of anyone within that eligibility criteria if we want to facilitate it locally. And I think some of these concerns are alleviated if we have a external organization provide this type of mentorship and if we advocate that they provide it.
Just to follow up to that, that was a very long answer to that question. I just want a simple negative or positive. Was that, those statements meant as a negative consideration or a positive consideration?
Maybe I could add. Certainly, the clerk in providing the municipal election has a greater overall responsibility beyond council to the community itself in upholding the integrity of the election. I require, I, I remember when I was the clerk of Norfolk County, I was asked by Amy Martin, who's there now mayor, to facilitate these types of sessions for interested candidates to run for Ward Six when she was no longer running. And I agreed I was going to go as a clerk at the time and facilitate her accessing interested people. I backed out after I left there because I felt it was inappropriate for me as an outgoing clerk to comment on an election that another clerk has done. But certainly, we, we do see that there's a lot of public scrutiny around elections. And certainly, I think it's important for council to stand behind the, the recommendations of council, of the clerk with an election. So I do think it is certainly a, a negative if we lose any public trust in the election and that the, the administration needs to remain outside of that. I think that is, is very important for the election and the integrity of the electoral process in municipal government. But that isn't to say that we don't believe in diversity and inclusion and equality. I think what the clerk has relayed is very much supportive of that, as is our commitment to the plan with the county that we've established and approved in 2024.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. One of the suggestions within the report is, as was just mentioned, was to reach out to the county and to the AMO to see if there is something that collectively we can advance the diversity matter. That seems to be a reasonable approach at this particular time.
Anyone else? Counselor Rahi.
Just a question through you, Mr. Mayor. Does, does anybody actually need any of this stuff to mentor anybody?
I'm sorry.
Does anybody need any, anything to mentor somebody?
Through you. No, no. Amy Martin did it all herself. I mean, certainly, that's a great approach. I think, I think we're fully supportive of people, councillors going out and providing their own mentorship to people. I think that's great.
Right. And if I can put my two cents worth, and I think it's kind of alluding to, I think, Counselor Rahi, is that we really don't need a lot of support and a lot of administrative stuff in order to make this happen. People can do mentoring on their own and that's just fine. I don't think the report, to kind of talk about Counselor Disrosi, I don't think the report talking about anything in a negative way. I think we asked for a report and he gave us a bunch of kind of considerations that we should think about. So I think the big question still is, do you want to do a, a, you want to do a kind of organized, I won't use the word bureaucratic, but you want to do kind of an organized mentor program or do you want to kind of just leave it the way we have it now? We have all kinds of, well, we have some kinds of things that, that deal with, with mentoring and deal with bringing people into running for office. And in terms of this community, I think, you know, the diversity is an important, is an important consideration, especially the Mennonite community, which we kind of should be going after as well. I probably said too much now. Counselor Disrosi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a final comment. I, I would obviously absolutely agree with just running the program independently. You know, during our last meeting, like, I brought this forth to council not for support. There's no financial support necessary. I don't need staff support to do it. It was more so to share this opportunity and this, this positive program with council, with this municipality to share that recognition. I didn't want to control this recognition to just myself. I, I did want to share it with a team mentality. But if it's overly complicated to do that and when it involves too much of a bureaucratic process, then yes, I would agree. There's, it absolutely makes no sense to do that. So, you know, given this, the feedback I received from staff, from this council, the initiative was taken to launch the program independently already. So, you know, leveraging the FCM guide designed for such efforts, it's already been launched independently. I'm already receiving applications. So I think it's definitely wiser just to do so independently if it's creating more of a headache for this council and for staff. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Chapman.
I do have a question. If this is launched independently, and what I've read, it does require staff to, to do some of the mentoring. And it, it mentions that there is a cost involved and that the hours being put into this program be given, recorded and reported to the FCM and used in an in-kind donation, which we would receive a receipt for. So my question is, if this is done independently, how much of staff time is going to be dedicated to that?
Okay. Counselor Disrosi.
Zero, because it's independently done by me. So staff aren't involved at all. The document in which you're reading about an in-kind donation is, say I was to take my mentee to an event that cost money. You could fill out this form, the mentee could fill out the form, and FCM has the, the say if they would like to reimburse that mentee for that cost. I, I don't plan on submitting anything to FCM or to this municipality. So to mentor a mentee, it's going to cost $0. It's purely just volunteering my time, my skills, my experience to pass on that information to the next generation.
That is not what I said. So I'm sorry if I disagree with you. In there, it states that staff are to record their time and submit it to the FCM as an in-kind donation. In-kind means that it's staff giving of their time and that municipality and receiving, it's if staff is giving their time. It is not about whether you cost money for your mentee to go somewhere. That is what I was referring to. And that is my question. Will staff be doing anything for you to do your own mentoring?
Are you, Counselor Disrosi, are you, when you say independently, are you actually doing the FCM or are you just doing it on your own, period?
So to answer both questions, I'm doing it on my own. I'm using the FCM guide that was provided. And the information that you're referring to, if you read that guide, one of the first doc, or one of the first paragraphs states that this guide is, is to be utilized and kind of fluctuate based on the needs or the, or the type of mentorship that's happening. You don't need to follow the guide verbatim. Utilize, is this working? Utilize the guide as you deem necessary. So as I wasn't going to be involving staff at all, I, I would not be, nor would the mentee be submitting any type of hours to staff. So I would say, no, that's, that's not being utilized for this mentorship.
Thank you. I think we've discussed this probably enough. So if anybody wants to mentor, you can do it on your own. That's just fine. There's no problem with doing anything like that. So we have a resolution on the table to receive the report. Seeing no further. Did you have another question?
I do. Through you, Worship. It does say in the report that we support the AMO in, in a mentorship. And I do support sending a letter to AMO with our support.
Okay. I think we can do that, right? I don't, we don't need a resolution to do that. I don't think it'd make it part of this resolution. Is that okay with everyone? Send a support letter to AMO. Okay, good. So then I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. So we have a presentation by people who have been patiently waiting while we discuss this. The first presentation, I believe, deals with Planet Youth. And we have Jessica Austin from Planet Youth. So Jessica, welcome. Take the podium.
Well, thank you. Our coalition member that was going to be here tonight is off ill, but we do have other coalition members here tonight. And I am Jessica Austin, one of the members that represents this coalition that is here in our community to serve the purpose of youth wellbeing and substance prevention. And our coalition has been formed through the Community Action Network of Children and Youth in Elgin with the support of our local drug and alcohol strategy as well. So the work of this coalition is to focus on upstream primary prevention efforts. We want to prevent substance use before it starts. And this might seem a little bit impossible, but it's looking at forming ourselves around the environment that supports youth in our communities. And we want to look at this through the research and practice, through the Icelandic model of substance prevention, as they have demonstrated years of success with this work. We also know that evidence from studies on return on investment when it comes to focusing on prevention gives us a return of $5 to $18 when we focus in on prevention work rather than the downstream of early intervention and harm reduction and treatment services for our community. So you might be thinking, what does this mean when it comes to other existing prevention programs and models that exist within our community? What makes this model different? Well, traditionally, we will find programs that exist within our community that are focusing on youth that are already using substances or have started to use substances. And with the work of Planet Youth, we want to change that environment so that they're not even starting to begin with. And so we want to look at what is it within the environment that can help make a youth thrive? And we live in a rural community, so I'll often reference the need to grow our garden. So look at the, the things that would flourish a garden around that plant and around that youth. Planet Youth coalitions are developed with a whole community context and approach. So these groups are local partners from private and public sectors. They include faith-based groups, police service clubs, youth centers, and municipal leaders. We know that youth centers and agencies that run preventative programming in our community are key partners. This includes our Parks and Recreation Services and our social services. They would want to be a part of our coalition because we want to look at using those data reports and the community collective action that can happen from this to align programs and activities to the solutions and results that are developed out of local context. So data, what does this mean from our local picture? I want to share a little bit about our age-old problem when it comes to rural data. It is actually quite often that we are too small to obtain sample sizes that are large enough to give our data validity to use. And the time lag between the point of collection to the point of us getting a report is typically two years. As you can imagine, the youth environment in our social context evolves so rapidly. A two-year lag time is very difficult for us to get on top of this and get to the front of it when we're having data managed in that manner. While the data you see on the screen is meeting the reportability criteria for us to share today, it is to be interpreted with caution as we do have low reporting rates for our region. It's so much so that the data for local male youth is not included within this parameter as it didn't meet the reporting requirements for the sample. But with that said, this is the best data that we have available to this point in time. And we do need to look at this as we need to be concerned for youth wellbeing in our communities. As you can see from this, I want to point out that the very first point, data point up there, we are five times higher in our youth reporting low or poor mental wellbeing. And this was pre-pandemic data. So it's not like our, our pandemic helped our youth mental wellness. We know anecdotally, and we've seen some other reports come through, that this will be even higher and more alarming for us as we get some of our 2023 data and move forward, demonstrating our need to really, really focus in and start taking action and moving forward with this work. As well, our region has always remained higher in our tobacco use. And in general, it has declined over the years, but we still remain higher. Our latest data shows us, though, according to that two-year lag period, we've missed out on an opportunity. We know that for every smoker who was lost through death or through quitting, we've gained three more vaping user, vape users. The vape market has gained over 663,000 new customers over the past year. And of that, 86% of them were non-smokers before starting. So we're growing in a market here. So we're, we're growing in a market here that we need to really focus in as well when it comes to our local substance use. So what does this mean for us? What can we do? We know that we need to be concerned about local youth and their well-being. Well, we need to start somewhere, and it is really about shifting the way that we think and act about substance use. Our best prevention measure, measures often have nothing to do with substance use at all, and that means that we are going to be focusing more in, on the domains that surround that individual, like their home and school, rec and leisure, and their peer environments, and what all fits into that. This is not a one-year planning cycle. This is a long-term commitment to seeing change within our community. And these are the kinds of shifts that we want to make. Is away from that individual belief, the just say no, to that community collective, what can we actually do as a community to change that environment? So the process of Planet Youth, it's a model that is driven off of using that localized data collection to understand both our risk and protective factors. The surveys are completed within a dataset base grade of students, typically grade nine or 10, and analyzed to show us not just how bad the situation is, which is the data that I just shared with you today, and the data that we have available is how bad the situation is, but what we can actually do to make a difference, where there might be solutions and the golden stars for us to start following. These reports are provided within six to eight weeks. That is compared to that two-year lag time. And so that we know that our local communities and our action tables can use this to engage with the communities, to review those reports in a timely manner, create a strategy that will be long-term on the resources and solutions that will work for our communities. These could be existing measures that we already have in place that we could just work on enhancing and put more resourcing to. Or it could mean that we need to remove some resources from a certain area and put it in another direction that's not being addressed at this time. This is an example of the report from Iceland and some of the work that they have done. These demonstrate some of the key changes that we would want to see. With a heavy focus on challenging social norms in the community and local policies, Planet Youth model has proven results. Effective primary prevention will look different from community to community, even within Elgin and St. Thomas communities. Staying true to those nothing for us, without us philosophy, if this model will stress the importance of that community-informed collaborative solution-making, it's really about taking a village. So it takes all sectors of our village to come together for those solutions and resources. It's not laid on the hands of one person. So with closing remarks, we, I really want to reiterate, Planet Youth is not a program. It's a whole community approach and a comprehensive approach to use local data to identify our priorities and establish those long-term, community-driven goals that focus on the protective factors that we, we have in rural communities we need to emphasize and build upon, and to reduce the risk factors that we also know that we have and we can manage. This model is locally driven, so this is an initiative that no one outside of our community will be telling us how this works or how this is. The pioneers in Iceland have obviously devised a very effective survey tool that can be used with a rapid data processing method that we have never seen in our region. This will be data that we would never get locally, and the response rates on this are key to us. The step-by-step pathway to help engage our communities is really important in making sure that our community understands the importance of using this data to move forward with planning for our community better. And we know that across Canada and within many communities in Ontario, they're all working at adopting this model so that it can work within our own local context. The growth of this work is getting stronger in our region, and I know Norfolk County just received, and they've adopted the model as well. We are looking for that support to make this locally more impactful for us as well. So given that proper data, we can become more effective and efficient at scaling our local solutions to the problems that we have and giving us the ability to monitor and hold ourselves accountable to the progress of building that healthier future. So being able to monitor it biannually with this data and plan and strategically align what we can resource to that. So with that, I hope you consider supporting our coalition's endeavors as we move forward in this approach. And you see us in our, in the community and moving forward to create space for this change in the way that we approach substance use. If you have any questions, I'm open to take them, and you are also able to reach me at the contact information on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Counsel, any question? Counselor Disrosia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jessica, for that presentation. I just had a question about the data collection that you have collected so far about our area. What are some of the recommendations that you perceive as solutions at this current time?
So the unfortunate thing with the data collection that we have, we have, we have research and literature that would show us, you know, some of the evidence-based programs and models that we can take on, but without understanding as a community what people are willing to accept. An example would be a program called Strengthening Families. It's an evidence-based program that could support mental well-being and, and parent-youth connection, but we don't have the resourcing to implement that. And we're not sure if that's even something that would be viable for parents and youth in our community, knowing that transportation is an issue, knowing that parents are working long hours, especially in a farm-related culture where, you know, we don't get in until the sun goes down. So running a program after school wouldn't work for parents. So for us to say that those are the solutions right now doesn't make sense. We would want to actually work with the community to come up with what makes sense, using the evidence informed from the research that we have, and then moving forward from there on determining what actually fits best for our community. I think the biggest thing that we've seen in the past is we often get handed programs and solutions that are urban-centric, and they just don't work in our communities. And so we really need to devise these with our community, not just as one entity, as public health. We can provide recommendations, but certainly it might not work in our community without that.
Ever follow-up?
Yep, just a follow-up question. So in terms of support, then, like, what are you seeking from this council, then? Like, are you just asking us to kind of stand by until you do have something to kind of move forward with, or what are you seeking as far as support goes from us?
I think a big piece of our coalition's work is making sure that we're not duplicating efforts. So if there is work and resourcing going into something that is youth-focused or youth-related around youth well-being in our community, we would hope that council members and, and would approach our coalition as to looking for, looking towards the expertise at the table, looking towards the data that we can collect, contributing towards that data collection by promoting it within the community, ensuring that our community understands that this is community-owned data that will be used as a community to develop solutions. I think that council can also look towards the use of this for making their, their strategic plans and their priorities within their, you know, Parks and Rec development and their social service programs in alignment with the data. That would be really impactful to make sure that we're actually using the information that we can get. Yeah.
Thank you.
How much you're using the resources of the Southwest Public Health Unit, like this data?
So Southwest Public Health Unit, I can share that we've actually just, we, we receive data through the national and federal levels. Our epidemiologists use that to create our community health status report. Southwest Public Health is contributing to the cost of the data collection for this because we need this localized data to inform some of the work that we do, obviously. So we are committed to committing the, some of the funding towards that. My role is within Southwest Public Health. That role is also committed to championing the work within the community and making sure that we keep that true to the nature, that we're, we're not one entity, that this is a community-led initiative, so building those community connections and relationships, and that the data will be in the hands of public health epidemiologists for us to pull further results outside of the reports that will be given through Planet Youth, if so requested. So we will have access to the clean datasets for us to pull further information. And the survey is, is quite extensive, so we will have a lot of information from a localized level.
How is the survey administered? Is this through the school system or some other method?
Yeah, schools are, are key. We've been working with both Thames Valley and London District School Board Research and Ethics to ensure they've completed a privacy impact assessment collaboratively for this. We would, we administer this primarily through the schools, the grade nine, 10 classrooms, if that's what the grades we choose as our base. But we have also locally presented and worked with some of our private sector individuals. So the ministerial table, for example, has received a presentation on this and how they could potentially support sharing the knowledge amongst their homeschooling and private school networks so that we can plan to implement the survey to youth that aren't in the public or Catholic school board.
Anything else from council? The Counselor Van Rys.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. As someone who grew up in Elgin County and understanding the struggles of, oh, this is going back many years to when I was a youth, and now running programs for youth in this community, I am absolutely thrilled to see that this is coming here. And I love the fact that you use the word "community" so many times because nobody understands this community better than people that live in it and work in it daily. So hopefully, we can get a lot of people that are engaging in the survey so you can get that data. But I'm excited to see what, what comes of this because we really need to, to show that the focus is the youth because they are our future. We need to do better. So I applaud you for coming here, and thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next item, Lisa Chipchase and Kathy Vandermeer. I'm sorry, we have a resolution before we get there?
Yep. That the presentation from Jessica Austin regarding the Coalition for Substance Abuse Prevention and the Planet Youth Model be received for information.
Secretary, Counselor, Counselor Van Rys. All those in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. And now, 5.2. Lisa Chipchase and Kathy Vandermeer, Elmer area Chamber of Commerce, presenting Heritage Festival information. Welcome.
Hello. I just have to put my glasses on here, or I'm not going to be able to see what I'm doing. So I am Lisa Chipchase, and I form part of the committee that is looking to plan a heritage festival for the community of Elmer. So I'd like to thank Mayor Cookett and council for your time this evening and the opportunity to present you with some information surrounding the planned activities for the festival. It is, portions of the festival are being organized under the Elmer Chamber of Commerce, but it's being done in partnership with several area businesses, organizations, and service clubs. The festival itself would be a three-day festival held September 19th, 20th, and 21st of 2025. And the objective of the committee is to organize a festival that is inclusive of all ages and backgrounds. We aim to include representation from as many cultural backgrounds as wish to participate. It is meant to be a celebration of the diverse, diverse community that Elmer is. It's our hope that the festival will be a tangible demonstration of the welcoming, friendly, and inclusive community that we are. We do know that all residents within our town indeed do have a proud heritage, and we do look forward to a bright future. This is our opportunity to showcase that to residents of surrounding areas and welcome them to our community for a weekend of fun and informative activities. Our weekend would kick off on the Friday evening with a dinner, which would be organized by the Mennonite Community Services. And we are also planning a community block party. So to facilitate the block party, we are proposing to close Sidenhamp Street West from John Street South to Center Street, and Center Street from Talbot Street West to Sidenhamp Street West. We have had discussions with Elmer Police, and they have advised that that proposal is feasible from their perspective. The block party would be for all ages. It will include music, buskers, food. It would be done both in the band shell, throughout Palmer Park, and it would run from approximately 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM in the evening. We do have quite a wide range of potential activities proposed for the Saturday, and one that we are particularly excited about is the possibility of a doors-open event. If you're not familiar with doors open, it provides an opportunity for a municipality to have several area locations and experiences open for the public to visit and explore. So if council is amenable to the idea of a doors-open event, our committee, our committee would undertake to facilitate the implementation of that event. It's our intention as well to approach neighboring municipalities, Malahide and Bayham, to potentially partner on this as well, and this would help us to provide a minimum of 10 locations for festival goers to visit. On the Saturday, activities would include, among other things, storytelling, singing and drumming presentation from the First Nation community, historic walk, art features, and we're partnering with the library, the museum, service clubs, and the fair board for a variety of other activities that will be offered throughout town. We'll wind down the weekend on Sunday with a community breakfast in partnership with a local service club. And we are currently in talks to organize a community church service, which would be held at the fairgrounds. The church service would be followed by a family picnic, and participants would be invited to bring their own picnic lunch or purchase something on-site. And that picnic would also include some traditional picnic games, children's games, that type of thing. Throughout the weekend, we would be looking to utilize the following locations through town would be Ballmore Park, the band shell, Palmer Park, and the Old Town Hall. And as I mentioned previously, we are seeking council support to proceed with the plans that I have discussed. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or Kathy would be happy to answer them. If we don't know the answer, we can certainly find out for you.
Thank you, Lisa. Certainly a very ambitious project. It's great. The Rock.
I just have a comment. Fantastic, love all of it. See you there if it happens.
Awesome, thank you.
When and how?
When.
Deputy Mayor, Barbara.
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. History is important. It's hard to know where you're going until you know where you've been.
Absolutely.
And if you start something, I, I hope it gets traction.
Awesome.
Counselor Disrosia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lisa, for that presentation. That was so well done. I believe our town could greatly benefit from increasing our community events. We, we seem to be limited for a town our size, so I think the more the merrier. I think that's fantastic. One question I did have was feasibility. So is this event proposed to be free admission for families, or will it be a cost associated with admission? That's what I would like to know.
Yes, so there, there are events within or during the weekend that will be at a cost. So for example, Mennonite Community Services is putting on a dinner on the Friday evening. So Mennonite, they would, they would sell tickets through the Mennonite Community Services, and they would benefit from those sales. The block party, obviously, the church service, those types of things would be free for all to come and enjoy. There may be items available there for them to purchase, of course, but in general, the, the chamber events, so as I say, the block party and that type of thing, will be free of charge for festival goers to participate in. But there will be items that will be at cost as well during the weekend.
Amazing, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Just a follow-up. Doors mentioned, doors open was mentioned. I thought we paused that participation in 2025. Could somebody clarify that?
I believe you paused it 10 years ago.
Yes, we did. Okay. So is the intent to get back into doors open?
I don't see why not. Counselor, it's right.
Sorry, could somebody clarify doors open then? Because maybe I have the wrong idea of what that is. Could somebody clarify that?
Certainly, yes. So doors open is, it's administered, it's a, it's a large program. It's, I believe, provincially administered through the Ontario Heritage Trust, I think it is. I apologize if that's incorrect. But what it is, is the municipality or surrounding municipalities select at least 10 locations, and they suggest either a specific location or somewhere where an individual could have an experience within the area that you are, are doing your doors open in. And then the public is free to come and tour those areas. So some examples would be, and some of these have probably been done in the past, so this isn't to reflect that these are the things that we intend to do now, but as an example, the fire hall or the police station. the fire hall or the police station. An example of an experience would be maybe a walk through the spring water, the Carolinian forest that is out there. So it's that type of thing to maybe get people into places where they maybe aren't always allowed to get into or haven't necessarily thought to get into. It just opens up their eyes to things in the community that they wouldn't have normally seen.
Tremendous explanation.
I hope so.
Just to follow up on that, so the doors open then, is it exclusive to town facilities? Or is it, like you said, the spring water, like that's the conservation? So is it, are you guys planning on having it with different locations or solely with town facilities?
So our idea or our hope is to approach neighboring municipalities, specifically Malahide and Bayam, to see if they're interested or at all, you know, interested in supporting that type of an event. And of course, if they are, then we would be happy to include things, as I say, like the spring water forest or the submarine or those types of things as well, right? So it really gives a broad area that we could work with.
Wonderful. Wonderful news. I expect that sometime in the future you're going to be coming back to council with a number.
That's a possibility. Solely, I can't commit our group, but...
Okay. Anything else from council? Seeing none, all those in favor. Do we have, we did read the...
No, we did not. And the resolution is that the presentation from Lisa Chipchase from the Elmer and Area Chamber of Commerce regarding the Heritage Festival of 2025 be received for information.
Moving second, councillor De Srozi, councillor, or deputy mayor Barber. All those in favor, it's carried. Thank you. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time.
I believe that we are now at number eight. Right. A new business in matters of urgency. And number nine, reading of bylaws and proceedings are on. Do we have resolutions for the bylaws?
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaw 66-24, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the closing documents for the sale of lands to Southwest Color Plus Incorporated, and bylaw 67-24, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on September 18th, 2024.
Moving second, councillor Chapman, councillor Raheem. All those in favor, it's carried. Thank you. Inquiries by members? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. At the Town Hall meeting last Monday, one of the suggestions from the floor was to find out, it was regarding the lack of practitioners within the area, lack of doctors, and support staff. One of the suggestions was made by a doctor that I spoke to to find out if the exiting doctors actually went through an exit interview and identified a reason why they're not staying in the area. And secondly, is there any concern about doctors coming into any particular geographic area, staying a short period of time, and then moving on? Perhaps they were taking advantage of setup fees and funding to get established. So I'm asking you, Mayor Cookett, through your connection in the health field, can you find out if exit interviews are given to departing doctors to narrow down why people are coming in for such short periods of time?
I'm sure they are, but I don't think that the information from exit interviews is public. The information is used by the organization to recruit new doctors so that they're aware of the kind of roadblocks to look for. So I don't have any other answer than that. And you had a second question?
Not right now, no. Pardon? No, sir.
No.
No. Okay.
Sorry, I can't answer beyond that. I can try to find out more. I can kind of talk to the executive director of the East Elgin Family Health Team often enough, and I'll try and find out more information. But at this point, I'm pretty sure that that information is not public.
That would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Statements and committee reports? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Another quick one from the Town Hall meeting. One of the delegations suggested that in their walkabouts around town, they were noticing minor maintenance issues that could be rectified fairly easily and quickly. I'm just suggesting to the people out there, us, staff, as we're going around, if you see something, say something. A lot of the times, minor issues can be rectified very, very quickly and with little or no cost. If you see something, say something. Make sure somebody is aware of any deficiencies in the building, in the buildings or the parks, so that they can be rectified.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councillor De Srozi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if council saw on my social media or through the channels of their social media, but the environmental leadership program, Students of East Elgin, did a massive cleanup throughout our park systems, all the way from Steen Park to the end of the new Rotary Park. That was Monday, and then today they actually did the creek system of Bradley Creek, which runs through Lyons Park and kind of a long path there. So I would just like to extend my heartfelt appreciation to those students for their outstanding efforts in collecting the waste. Their dedication to environmental stewardship not only enhances the health of our local ecosystems, but also sets a powerful example for our community. The efforts demonstrated by the school, Conservation Authority, and the town highlight the significance and positive outcomes of collaborative initiatives. So thank you to all who were involved and for preserving our natural resources and inspiring others to take action. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, I have the mayor's report. I have a number of items. Since we last met, I believe since we last met, we had the bowling tournament, and the bowling tournament raised a lot of money and a lot of surbacks for people. And so I'd like to thank councillor Chapman for leading the Elmer team. I was supposedly the captain, but I didn't do anything. It was all councillor Chapman that did it. She did all the fundraising and we came up with, I think it was forty-some thousand dollars as a number one, so thank you. Was that the exact number?
Our team raised four thousand two hundred and forty-five.
I'm sorry. I overplayed it.
I'd like it to be forty, but...
Yeah, it would be true. So it's three thousand normally for the team, but we made four thousand something, and that's great. The Town Hall meeting was well attended. For a Town Hall meeting, I think it was over forty people in it, and there were a lot of discussion, and the Elmer Express has reported very well on what happened at the Town Hall meeting. And this morning, I had the pleasure to be with a number, with the Catholic, the London District Catholic School Board and the Assumption School in their grand opening of a childcare center, which has been going on for some time, and councillor De Srozi was there as well. A lot of people from both the school board and the Assumption and the Milestone, which is the people that run the childcare, certainly Elmer needs this kind of thing. There's no question about it. So I was very pleased to be part of that particular grand opening. While there was the grand opening of the MRI today at Stig Hospital with the number of people they're going through. It's an amazing machine, kind of scary, but it's really important for this area in the sense that, you know, five thousand people last year were sent to MRIs in different parts of Ontario, and for the first time, we won't have to do that because we have our own MRI machine in St. In Lestie, I thought a long time about talking about this and churned a lot, but I could not let the comments I'm going to make pass. As mayor, I have the responsibility to maintain the decorum and the integrity of council. And I see this responsibility as one that can sometimes involve actions outside of council chambers. And of course, the action I'm talking about was outside of council chambers. It has been brought to my attention by members of council that a member of council has been involved in supporting a social media post which is defamatory and degrading to councillors. Specifically, councillors were accused of misogynistic behavior over referring a notice of motion to a staff report. Misogynistic? Do you know what the word misogynistic means? I mean, words matter. Misogynistic means the hatred of women and showing contempt of women. So council, according to this post, were haters of women and showed contempt of women. It's one thing to criticize council. That's quite fine. We have no objections to free speech or criticism. Council is used to turning the other cheek, but we've run out of cheeks. This issue becomes a matter of the decorum and integrity of council when a member of council is involved in supporting the post. First point I wanted to make is that that really should not ever happen. Second point, any decision by council is considered the will of council, and councillors are expected to at least respect the democratic process of the will of council. Should any councillor wish to change a decision, there is a process within the procedural bylaws to provide another look. This isn't about shutting down disagreement. Councillors have ample opportunity to disagree within council debate, and once a decision is made, let us not trundle off to our favorite social media to trash it. Supporting the defamation of council is at the very least acting in bad faith, and it jeopardizes the cultural harmony of the workplace. It's time to stop that kind of thing. So like, you know, an educational opportunity that I have, the lesson always summarizes two points. If you're a councillor, you can't have personal attacks on other councillors, no matter in what medium. Secondly, once council makes a decision, don't destroy the integrity of council by going against it. Right? So I've had a heavy decision to make on talking about this, but I think an apology is in order. Whoever wrote the post or is responsible for the post should give us an apology. It's just the right thing to do. Okay. Thank you very much. Now we have, next item, notice, notice of motion. None? Meeting close to the public.
That council moves into a meeting close to the public at 7:42 PM for the purpose of considering a staff report CAO 47-24, industrial land updates, and staff report CAO 48-24, joint water board, and that consideration of these items is close to the public pursuant to section 239, 2C of the Municipal Act, NK, as amended as the subject matter pertains to see a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, NK, a plan position, sorry, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Moving second, councillor Chapman, councillor Raheem.